I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, October 27th, 2020, to order. Good evening and welcome to everyone. I'd like to notify you that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access, pursuant by an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law, and this meeting is being recorded. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. May I please ask that if anyone is, anyone else is recording the meeting, could you please identify yourself right now? I see that, I recognize the Sidrones, and I believe is this W A T D? Could you please identify yourself?
It is David Sidroni, W A T D, Mary. Hello, how are you?
Good, good evening, David. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else is recording this meeting, could you please use the raise hand function? Or if you're calling in by phone, please unmute your line and let us know. We'll just give that a few seconds here. Okay, seeing none, the first item of business on the agenda this evening is the approval of the Board's minutes dated October 6th, 2020. I do note that we received some edits a short time ago from Joe. Those look good to me. Bill, I didn't know if you had had a chance to look? And if you're ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Would either of you like to make a motion, please?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2020.
Say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. The main, the main event tonight, I believe, is the next agenda item, which has been a standard agenda item for the past few weeks, and that is the discussion of proposed MBTA, Hingham Ferry, and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. And we are, we are very fortunate this evening to be able to welcome a few guests to our meeting. Our State Senator Patrick O'Connor, State Representatives Jamie Murphy and Joan Moschino, the CEO of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, Peter Foreman. And we are also joined this evening by the Town's Representative to the MBTA, Mr. David Alshuler. Just so that folks will get a sense of kind of how we're going to do this tonight. Joe Fisher, Bill's and my colleague, has been the selectman liaison on this. So as is our typical practice, we'll begin kind of with an update from Joe. And then following that, we will hear from State Representative Moschino, State Senator O'Connor, State Rep. Murphy, Mr. Foreman. And then at that point, we will open it up to questions and comments from the public. As also as part of this agenda item, those of you who have been tuning in have known that the Board has been working on a letter to send to the state. And that's something that Joe has been working on very diligently. And we're going to take some time after the public discussion to discuss the Board's letter. And this is an opportunity for Bill to get input, for Joe to get input. Because as many of you know, we can't, we can't communicate outside of the meeting, so having discussions on a letter like this has to happen in public. So with that, Joe, perhaps you could start with an update for, for the Board and for the town as to the activities that we've been undertaking.
Yes, so thank you, Mary. And thank you for introducing the numerous guests we have this evening. There are a number of topics I want to cover tonight, and I really am going to enlist some of our guests in covering those topics. I think the public needs to know where do matters stand now? What is, what's going on? What's the current proposal from the T? And what's the T's schedule for moving forward? What are the next steps? And the public and especially Hingham residents want to know how this is going to affect the Town of Hingham. And then we all want to know what is the Board of Selectmen doing and what are we planning to do? The first thing that we're going to do, and Mary touched on this, is a letter that we're going to be sending to Mass Department of Transportation, the MBTA, and other government officials. We can review that. And it's also, I think, important for us to hear what other towns are doing. And then in response to communications I've received, and I'm sure other selectmen have received, the residents want to know what can they do to help save the ferry and to help save Green Bush? And then finally, we should have a discussion about what resources are out there so that people know where to turn, where can we look, where can we get additional information? And so that is my agenda for what we want to cover. I think if I covered all those topics, I'd be monopolizing the entire meeting. So again, I think I'm going to call on Joan and others to fill in on those topics. The first one, which is where do matters stand now? Why are we here? Why are we even talking about this? And my understanding, and I'm going to really ask Joan, who is the, I call her the ringleader because she's really organizing, I think, an incredible response on the part of our community and numerous communities to respond to this. But what we're looking at now is the T is attempting to find ways to save money and bring in revenue in an effort to close an expected budget deficit. I believe the current deficit planning is at least $300 million due to the coronavirus pandemic. The T had an extensive meeting and discussions with the Mass dot Board of, I'm not sure the official name of the Board, but also the Fiscal and Management Control Board on October 19th, where there were extensive discussions and tentative plans. There was supposed to be another meeting of that Board for next Monday, the 2nd of November. And I understand from Joan that that meeting has been moved a week to the 9th of November, to Monday. And in terms of the schedule, I'm going to ask Joan, what do you see as the next step that either the T or Mastot will be taking?
So, good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm State Representative Joan Moschino. And I'm here tonight with my colleagues and friends, Senator Patrick O'Connor and State Representative Jamie Murphy. So we're delighted to be able to join you tonight and talk a little bit about what's going on with the MBTA and the proposed cuts. So as you all know, just for people who are tuning in for the first time on this, you know, the Governor declared in a state of emergency, he asked us to stay home and work from home, and and we have. And thus, the ridership has declined precipitously over the many months of the pandemic. And as things have been, if we have been working diligently to reopen the economy, ridership has begun to resume, both for essential workers, it was always there, but also other components, other of economic sectors. And it is not anywhere near the ridership that we've, that we've always been used to pre-pandemic. And so that has created a revenue problem at the T, and that is really the exercise that's going on here is both how to meet existing shortfalls and how to plan for the next budget cycle. And the question is how to predict. The MBTA has, through its statutory process, works with the Fiscal and Management Control Board. And they also work closely with Mastot. And that's the series of meetings that Joe was referring to, is that they have been looking at their revenue projections, they are statutorily obligated to begin their budget process now. And that's, so that's why the timing of this is happening now. But everybody's looking ahead and trying to figure out how to forecast, you know, the return of ridership, the return of this, you know, activity. So essentially, they are proposing, what they're doing is they're going through an exercise of looking at a series of scenarios, of ridership scenarios. And to their credit, the MBTA has actually been using sort of a rubric, if you will, looking at, you know, critical transit lines, critical transit communities, and where ridership is coming back and where ridership is strong. And they're trying to balance all of these needs. And to their credit, they're, they're thinking about doing this in a very, sort of in a policy structured way, which is great to hear them doing that. I would argue that the policy rubric they're looking at is too narrow. And so what you're hearing, and if you go on to the MBTA's website, you can actually download, or if you go to my website, joanmoschino.com, and you see the banner at the top for the ferries, they'll take you right to the page, and all of the information is captured there. So you can actually look at the slides yourself, and I encourage you to do so. And what it does is, through their evaluation, the Green Bush Line and the commuter, the ferry fall into sort of the fourth quadrant, which is setting them up for deep cuts, or actually in the ferry case, possibly eliminating altogether. This is a real scenario, this isn't bluster, this is, this is something that they're actually trying to solve a real problem. And this is kind of the rubric that they're coming into. So what Joe, where we're at is, they have made a series of presentation, draft presentations to the Boards. And it's, it's been either a joint Board or a triple Board meeting with Mastot. And what they're doing is they're going to present on November 9th, at that meeting, the rubric that they're going to use, the scenarios that they're going to, that they're actually proposing. After that point, there will be a public comment timeframe. They must by law hold an open public meeting and take public comments on these things. And, and what I've understood is that they'll actually probably have a series of meetings to make, so that people can attend in their regions. And then they will decide on, they will make a decision, a recommendation for vote to the Fiscal Management Control Board on December 7th. So time is short. We have been working collaboratively, Hingham, Holco, Hasit, and Situate. And we've also pulled in Norwell, Hanover, Marshfield as well. And we've been doing a series of actions. The first, you're going to hear a little bit more from your selectman, Joe Fisher, about the letter that we've asked and suggested in the courage each of the towns to write. You have a wonderful, unique story to tell about transitory developments here in Hingham and the investments that we've made based on intermodal centers and transit. There, we have also activated ridership. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. We have reached out to our partners in the business community. And Peter Foreman is here from the South Shore Chamber, and I believe him to talk about the economic, both the regional economic case as well as the local economic case, and how the ripple effect will, will, will impact our larger planning and our larger economic activity. We've also reached out to our, to our environmental community in terms of making just the case, you know, we all, we all remember, well, most of us are old enough to remember when they were doing the big dig and some of the mitigation. Part of that included building out the ferries, part of that included restoring the Green Bush Line. And so, you know, exploring what the impacts are as we turn away from those kinds of activities. And especially in a moment when we're suffering from public health in the pandemic, what the public health issues are, our carbon emission reduction goals, our social justice and our congestion and transit goals. So we're kind of heading in a wrong direction. And then we've also reached out to the Secretary of Transportation as well. And from more of a system perspective, and asked the Water Transportation Advisory Council if they would convene and consider these proposals, and what, what long-term or outright elimination of service will mean for us, and how that will play itself out. So we've really tried to activate every stakeholder we could think of. Coming back really quickly to, to the riders. I can share with you that the four towns have come together and are going to be pushing out, you know, collaborating in terms of their communications, which is fantastic. I think that we should show ourselves as a region. Riders have come together in Hull around savetheferry.org. And what they're doing is they are actually asking for people to sign up with them, to share their story, and to try to put a face on who the ridership is. As I mentioned before, one of the the criteria is this idea of critical, critical transit. And instead of, you know, we're looking to counter that, that false narrative of it's a luxury transit, it's actually critical transit for many of us. And so people who are comfortable and interested should look at savetheferry.org and potentially share your story, or at least follow them and look for their alerts. The Town of Hull has also stood up a petition. And you can go to the Town of Hull's main webpage, and on the front, there's like a little box that says, "Sign the petition." They have 5,100 people have already signed it from all of the communities. So it would be fantastic, if you have not already signed it, to go to their webpage and to add your voice to that. And what will happen is the town, when they send in their letter, the Town of Hull sends in their letter to the MBTA, they'll send that, whatever they've captured with it. And then they'll continue to keep capturing new signatures right straight through the advocacy period. I think the other thing that is important to do is we have a two-week window of time to share in advance of the T making their actual recommendations. We have a chance as riders, and I'm a fellow rider on the ferry, to let them know how we feel about it. And so what Senator O'Connor and Representative Murphy and I have been doing has been to push out instructions how to comment, provide comment to the MBTA and the Fiscal Management Control Board in advance of their meeting. And we ask that when you send that note in, that you talk about why you value public transit. And why you value either the Green Bush Line, or why you value the ferry, or the bus, if you're, if you're a bus rider as well. And quite frankly, the ride, no one's talking about the ride. And we just ask that you talk to them and share with them why you value it. And give them a reason to support ongoing service. And I'll explain how in a minute. And you can do that in sort of two ways. You can, in advance of their meeting, you can send them an email. And then, or you can leave a voicemail, no more than three minutes, and they will actually play it at the meeting. Although last time, we got 120 voicemails, so they had to just pick selected ones. But the, as far as I'm concerned, I would love to make that number 240. They have received to date 540 emails from our district on the ferry and the commuter rail, and I'd love to get that over 1,000. So if you haven't sent that in, that would be great. And what I'm also asking is that when you send that email to the T on why you value it, also send it to the constituent services, to the Governor's Constituent Services Office, to him and to Secretary Pollock. We think it's really important, all decisions, you know, rise to the top. And we think it's important that the Governor hear from us about how we do that. The instructions, I could, I could sort of read it out loud, but all I have to really do is go to my webpage, joanmoschino.com. And there's actually instructions on how to do it. You're also welcome to sign up for my newsletter for just the ferries. You don't have to sign up for the whole newsletter if you don't want to, you can just sign up for just the ferries. And we will send out weekly alerts to let everyone know what the time, what the critical dates are, what the immediate opportunity for advocacy is. And even if you need a few words on, on how to, how to help craft that, we're happy to do that. So I'm going to stop there and turn it over to my colleagues to talk a little bit more about some of the other substantive pieces of it. But that's really kind of the timeframe, we have a two-week window. We'd love to, if you sign up with me, if you sign up with Senator O'Connor's office, if you sign up with Save the Ferry, all of those places, we'll be sending out alerts for future actions. But this is the immediate one, and this is the immediate timeframe where we have an opportunity to really share in a positive way why we're doing this. So, you know, I'm going to stop there and turn to my colleagues. I don't know, Senator O'Connor, if you'd like to add to that.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So I think that Joan outlined the timeline incredibly well, as well as what we all can do as residents of the South Shore to impress upon the MBTA that this is something that, you know, we really care about, and it's something that we want to preserve. The cuts, you know, the proposed cuts are definitely real, they're going to have to come from somewhere inside of the MBTA's budget. Last Wednesday, in my role as ranking member of Ways and Means, we had a meeting that Secretary Pollock was at. I was able to ask her multiple questions about the transportation budget in particular. Because right now, inside of the state, there are no major cuts in the fiscal year 21 budget, which were approximately halfway through at this point in time, even though we've gone on sort of one month by one month, sometimes extended month budgets. So we're working on sort of a final revised budget, and inside of that, there's no cuts to essential services, no cuts to education, no cuts to local aid. And the real cuts that are going to come are all in transportation. And the reason why, just to sort of explain it, is that the decline in ridership has led to major reductions in the amount of fares that the MBTA are taking in. On top of that, every, all the other expenses they have, whether it be capital expenses, et cetera. That hole right now is about $500 million. That hole is being filled by CARES Act money through the, through the stimulus package that was sent to the states. And they don't believe that when that money runs out, which will be next fiscal year, they do not believe that the ridership will pick up enough to offset that. So there'll be a cliff that the MBTA will go off of, and there will be a deficit. Now, rather than facing that deficit all in one fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 22, what they're trying to do is put together a plan to see where there could be potential savings in this current fiscal year. And that sort of led us to where we are right now, is that the MBTA is trying to get their fiscal house in order. And the biggest thing that they can do in order to do that is to reduce service. We're obviously completely opposed to them, and especially being as targeted, representing all of the South Shore, Waymouth, all the way down at Duxbury. You know, the, the Green Bush Line, just to give you some of the numbers as far as why they're putting some of this out there. The Green Bush Line during peak, pre-COVID, was at somewhere between 98 and 104% ridership capacity. Now, according to Secretary Pollock during that meeting, they're at 10% to 12%. So this is a real issue that the supply of public transportation does not meet the demand right now. We obviously believe that this demand's going to pick up, and hopefully pick up rather quickly as we continue to get more confidence in public health metrics to be able to get people back into Boston. But we can't just pretend that the changes that we've seen socially, with the way in which people communicate to, excuse me, to and from work, the, the, being able to work at home in a home office, all of these things are going to go into reports that'll be issued by the MBTA as far as when they think the ridership levels will be back up to the, to the levels they were before COVID-19. We don't have a good gauge on that, we've heard a few years as far as one of the estimates to, as long as this is completely going to change the structure of commercial real estate in Boston. And we will never get to those numbers again, but we'll still obviously see the climbs. So we're advocating for obviously no service cuts whatsoever, but being realistic that the MBTA has, you know, has set out specifically a goal of getting to a certain number. So I think that, you know, as we move forward, the, the Green Bush Line and the ferry need to be preserved. And we need to do as much as we possibly can to make sure that they never go offline. I think it would be a complete shame, especially, well, for both services, but for the Green Bush Line in particular, we put $574 million into that project just 15 years ago on completion. And the ferry, you know, we, we were here, we saw this story before, five or six years ago, when we had a packed auditorium at Hingham Town Hall going against the MBTA at those budget cuts. So we understand, we're realistic. Secretary Pollock is one of the more brilliant people that I've ever met in my entire life. And she's realistic to what's happening right now, as we all should be as well, is that ridership is down. And what we need to do is, we need to make a case to the MBTA not to cut at all. And hopefully, we can get them to listen to us. But if they don't go for that, we need to make sure that we get the message out that we need to preserve service. Because it's always going to be easier to scale back up from something that's in existence right now, rather than if they take Green Bush or the ferry offline, that may be a death blow to both of those modes of transportation. We can absolutely not allow that to happen. And my hope is that that's not even one of the options that's on the table when the meeting happens on the 9th, that they realize that we need modes of public transportation, how valuable the ferry is to the South Shore, how valuable the commuter rail is. And that, you know, as we pick up. And one of the other things, the one thing that I wanted to hit on as well, is that monitoring has to be done. So once, once we land with whatever we land with that the MBTA makes a decision on, we have to take it upon ourselves, as well as make sure the MBTA continues to monitor the increase in ridership. There won't be a decline from a certain point in time. And after that, there'll just be increases. And as those increases happen, we will all need to advocate, if there are service reductions that were put in place, we all need to advocate for more service immediately to meet the demands of the commuters down on the South Shore. So this is going to be, in my opinion, not just sort of a immediate situation when it comes to transportation on the South Shore. I think that this is going to be a long-term one.
Representative Murphy? You're muted.
Okay, we go. Hi, everybody. How are you? So not to be redundant of what my colleagues have said, but the T is looking at a budget shortfall for 2021. In 2022, they're looking to cut between 60 and 255 million dollars from the budget somehow. And they're looking at a lot of ways to do that. They're looking at bus routes, they're looking at trains, they're looking at the subway, they're looking at ferries. And it would seem that what they're looking at right away is lower ridership modes of transportation, which is the commuter rail system and the ferries. As Pat and Joan said, we're working collaboratively to make sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, I've been around long enough to have seen the reinvestment of the Green Bush Line and the restart-up of the Green Bush Line at a significant cost of over half a billion dollars. We're all down at the Hingham Ferry with the new modal center down there, celebrating that. And so we've got to make the case that the ferries and the commuter rails are very important to the South Shore. It's good that Peter Foreman is on here, because we have to do it not just politically, but from a, from a business standpoint and a resident standpoint to say that we need this, that the state has made significant investments that we need to keep running. As Joan mentioned, the timeframe, it is a short timeframe. No decision has been made yet. It's up to us as a region to collectively make the case that the ferry is important to us, the Hingham Ferry and the Hull Ferry is important to us, as is the commuter rail. And so I can say that Pat, Joan, and myself stand ready to assist the towns in making that case, both from a, you know, a selectman standpoint, from a town government standpoint, but also from a resident standpoint. So we're all working together to make sure that the ferry is not put into a suspended service at this point. So we stand ready to help.
Thank you. Mary, can I continue, or did you want to?
Please. No, go ahead, Joe. Did we want to hear from Mr. Foreman next?
Yeah, before we do, I just want to make sure you don't have to jump on a train or go anyplace. Mary, that was a joke. The, one of the things that, that Representative Moschino pointed out is what the Town of Hull has done, and she invited us to sign the petition that is on the Hull website. Just, just to work clear, that is a petition to save the ferry, which is an important aspect, but that's part of the problem. We also need a petition to save Green Bush. And I think that's one of the things that this Board needs to do to figure out whether or not we can organize that, or whether we have residents who are willing to put that, put that together on short notice. And the more petitions we have, I think, the better. The savetheferry.org is excellent. I believe they currently have over 500 subscribers already. So if you have not subscribed, I'd encourage you to do so. And the Hull petition, we should all support, which is a petition for the ferry. And again, I think we do need something out there as a petition for, for Green Bush. In terms of the way that this will affect Hingham, and then I want to turn to, I think, Peter Foreman to address the broader issue of how it affects businesses on the South Shore. But in terms of the effects on Hingham and the issues that we need to address, there are, and this is really getting into the letter that I think the town needs to send. There are four points that I've, that I'm proposing that we look at in the letter. Because I think there are four points that address Hingham and, as well as, as the community, that go beyond business, but they include business issues. The first point is really one of public health. This is a, what's going on with, with the T is a reaction to the coronavirus pandemic. And what they're proposing with respect to the ferry is essentially to eliminate that service. The ferry service is the only service, the only transportation service that the T offers that allows riders to be outside, to have fresh air. It's as if the T, if they were responsible for restaurants, that they said, we're going to close all the restaurants that offer outdoor dining. That is how antithetical that is from a public health perspective. The ferry is, in my view, the gold standard for how transportation needs to be moving forward in the COVID world and the post-COVID world. It's an area where people can, it's a mode of transportation where people can be outside, weather permitting. You can have fresh air if you're sitting inside. And it is the last mode of, of transportation that should be cut in a pandemic situation. The second issue that I think the town needs to address, and it's more than a town issue, but it's at least a town issue, is that reducing ferry and train service will lead to increased greenhouse gas emissions. This, this town and the state have committed to a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and forcing commuters off of the ferry and off of the train into their cars will in fact result in incre- increased greenhouse community, greenhouse emissions, not only for this community, but for communities all along Route 3 and Route 93. The third issue that I think is important for this town is that the proposed cutbacks will, in my view, undermine the affordable housing and smart growth projects that this town has been working on. We have significant affordable housing projects right at the shipyard. And the promise that we made to residents when they moved there is that there'd be public transportation available. And that's about to be stripped away. So I think we have an obligation to those who are looking to or already reside in the affordable housing units to make sure that public transportation is available for them. And the fourth issue is really a global issue in terms of the impact on overall business development. Businesses and future businesses will be adversely affected once the T does, once they implement cuts, if that's allowed to proceed. So I think there are four points that this board needs to make loud and clear and make sure that the MBTA board and MAS dot hear those concerns. The issues, though, go well beyond Hingham, and I think it'd be appropriate to ask Peter Foreman from the chamber to give us his thoughts.
Thanks, Joe. Thank, thanks for the invitation, and I appreciate what the local towns and the legislative delegation are doing on this. I'm not being dramatic when I tell you that I think these proposals present probably the greatest economic setback to the region than we've probably seen since the shipyards closed down 70 years ago or 50 years ago. The, uh, the immediate impact will not be as deep as COVID itself, nor perhaps as the recession 10 years ago. But the, the greatest setback for us because of really two things. One, they put the South Shore at a distinct competitive disadvantage to the rest of metropolitan Boston if we lose these services in terms of economic recovery. And an awful lot of the economic development strategy that has been in play on the South Shore, and certainly promoted by the chamber, has been around transit-oriented development and real estate development around transit stops. So if these services were to be eliminated, that is going to pull the rug out from under all of that activity. I've been involved for the last year and a half on a commission for the Secretary of Transportation on the future of rail visioning. And I think some of this is getting at some internal philosophical debate about T, the T's mission, whether they are mostly in urban transportation system of subways just to move people around the city, or if they're a larger metropolitan system. The, the staff work done on this, while I, I think it was impressive with their analysis, the methodology missed an awful lot. They looked at it simply as a people-moving transportation analysis on when riders were going to return. They did not look at the extended economic impact in the equations that they should before they make any decisions, such as what services would be most expensive to return if they took them off and mothballed for a little while. They, they didn't look at that. They did not look at ripple effects on other industries, such as tourism. Talking to the, the head of the Boston Harbor Cruises, the general manager, one reason they're able to operate so well with the summer tourism, which is critical state industry, is because they're able to extend their operation year-round with the commute. That makes their product better and allows them to, to probably do more with tourism to support that industry. They're a large employer in the marine industry. You wipe that out, and that will affect workforce development in other marine industries for years to come. So the MBTA staff, I don't think, looked at any of this. And they certainly have not looked at other state priorities. Most notably, housing. And what that will do to our plans on the South Shore for housing, the environmental issues, which Joe touched on pretty thoroughly, Boston congestion and that commute. And then economic development in the suburbs and spreading development around the state. So I've been in touch, I've had a conversation last week with the Secretary of Economic Development and Housing to raise some of these concerns. Our approach, while we're certainly going to protest this and applaud what everybody is doing in protesting this with the MBTA, and we will be speaking with the T, the chairman of the Fiscal Control and Management Board will be speaking to the chamber in two weeks. But we think that with some of these decisions, particularly the, the ferry, the effort that we're going to be pursuing isn't just impressing upon the T why they need to look elsewhere, but impressing on other state or possibly federal officials why their priorities are going to be affected and find the money from other sources. I understand the T's problem. The state understands it. And it may be that one of the solutions here isn't fighting to keep, for example, the ferry system under the MBTA, but get, get it off the T's books and get it housed or funded some other way. And I raised that with the secretary. I don't know if that is setting up a ferry authority or steamship authority for the North and South Shores. I don't know if it's other economic development funding from non-MBTA agencies filling up some of the gap here. But, but we think that this is less about moving people as a state policy, less about people moving, more about economic development. And we're trying to get those other players to take an interest and make it an economic development issue outside of the MBTA. That should not discourage anyone fighting the T because we're going to join in that. But I don't think the, the, this is all this all comes down to the T or nothing. I think there may be some other solutions. I don't have a clue what they, they are, but I think there may be some.
Thank you. Joe, I know you had a list of, of seven different items. I just, as, as I'm looking, were there, were there any other points that you wanted to add before opening it up to members of the public? Or actually, I'll open it up to Bill as well before that.
Sure. I, I think it's important that we emphasize to our residents from Hingham who are on this call, what can they do and what should they do to make sure that their voices are heard and that every effort is taken to preserve the ferry and to preserve the Green Bush line? I think what we've heard is that's a petition, there's actually two petitions with respect to the ferry. And we should make sure that everyone participates in those at savetheferry.org and also at the Town of Hull website. Joan, am I correct? Those are two separate petitions? Yep.
Um, yes. So the actual sign your name to the petition is on the Town of Hull's website, which is just town, I think it's town.hull.m a.us. And if you just look on the top left corner, there should be an icon or block that you can click on. It will take you straight to the ferry. Then there is an advocacy organization called savetheferry.org. They are, they are, they're looking sort of beyond that sort of petition. What they're doing is they're actually capturing stories, who rides this, and there are real themes that are coming out. We have, apparently, we have a lot of critical workers, sort of in the medical industry and government. A lot of seniors take it in for medical, you know, but at the end of the day, this is about how we all get to work. And these cuts will be, they'll be deep, they'll be permanent. And they're going to really potentially cripple the ferry and, and have long-term, really devastating effects, as you've heard my colleagues talk about. The next meeting is the November 9th meeting of the MBTA with FMCB. And if you want to send a comment in, you can go to my website, joemoschino.com, and look at the banner, it'll take you to the page for ferries, it has instructions. Or you can take down this email address, publiccomment@dot dot state dot m a dot u s. And when you send your comments about why you value the T to them, I would ask that you would also send it to constituent dot services at state dot m a dot u s. That's the governor's constituent services office. Just copy them and share it with them. And if you want to actually, if you're courageous enough to leave a voicemail, no more than three minutes, you can call 857 368 1655 and leave a polite, very brief, three-minute email about why you value the ferry and the commuter rail service. And that's all on my website for instructions, so you can find it there if you weren't quick enough to get it down now. This is your chance to speak up now.
But that, that information will also be posted on the Board of Selectmen website. We've had it posted for the, for the prior meeting. I would emphasize that the MAS dot board listens to your voicemails, and they will actually place them on the public record with everyone listening. They take that seriously. The emails are all received, and they're also all entered in the public record, so that's important. And so there's the petition for the ferry. There is not a petition right now for the Green Bush line. We need to get something going there. Sending in the comments that Joan mentioned. And really communicating with your government representatives and letting them know how important this issue is, is what we need to do. So, Mary?
Thank you.
We're ready.
And, you know, Joe, you've been doing yeoman's work, coordinating, getting information, really taking the lead on being Hingham's voice as we approach this from a regional perspective. So I just want to thank you for all of your efforts and all of your continued efforts. Bill, did you have any questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, just real briefly, first of all, Joe, I want, Joe, I want to thank you as well for all your hard work. And I want to thank all of our legislators here tonight who are advocating for us and you as well, Peter. Thank you for joining us and for your advocacy. Just a comment and a quick question. Now, I am someone who regularly takes both the commuter rail and the green, and sorry, and the ferry. And to lose cer- those services would be absolutely devastating to our area economically. Put all those cars back on the road would be awful for our environment. So, so many, so many reasons, you know, why we need to fight this fight. And my question is, and I don't know who would have the answer here, but I know this summer, when some of the ferries to the islands were, were threatened to be cut, that the federal government stepped in and assisted significantly with federal funding. Has anybody reached out to Congressman Lynch's office or our senators to see if, if federal funding could help, especially with our, with our ferry?
So I can share with you that through the CARES Act, a significant amount of money came out to the states to support public transit. And the public, so the T has been running at a deficit, but using that money to, to, to continue to be running during this fiscal year. The federal delegation has actually been in long discussions with the Secretary of Transportation, Stephanie Pollak, as well as with the, the T about what the next round of stimulus will look like and how it will be shaped. And basically, everyone agrees that there will be transportation money in there, but there's great uncertainty about how much and what you could spend it on and when a stimulus package might come out. So the T is just being practical right now. But that conversation is, is very much alive and well. I've personally spoken to Sen- to Senator Warren's office, and then today, what, what what we've been doing is convening a regular call among the towns and the select, the selectmen liaisons. And been inviting people like Peter Foreman to come and speak to us, and we had Bob Lawler from the ferry, just by way of examples, our regional planning organization, just to speak to us and make sure that we are consistent with our messaging, that we are coordinated and that we all know what each other's doing. And Peter actually invited Jim Cantwell, who is the state director for Senator Markey's office there. So they are well briefed. We have spoken to Congressman Lynch about this. And everybody is both on the local, the state, and the federal level, working towards finding a solution relative to revenue. So it's, you know, we'll see. I mean, it's just one of those things that we're just going to have to keep, keep fighting for it throughout this process.
And I had one more thing to that, too. So Bill, one of the other things that we have already done inside of the fiscal year 21 budget is that there are federal funds that come into the state every single year. And some of those federal funds that typically go to capital projects are going to be used to plug structural deficits that exist right now in the MBTA, so they're going to be used for operating expenses. And there's also money that's set aside for capital projects inside the state. And a certain percentage of that is going to be used for operating expenses as well. So they're already really using some pretty creative math to make this budget work in the first place. And even if, and because this was, was, was one of the questions I had asked Secretary Pollak during the Ways and Means hearing was, what if we do get another round of federal funds? And she did say that it changes everything. But it still remains that at some point in time, there will be a cliff that the federal money will dry up. We will have a structural deficit. And it just depends on how much that structural deficit is and at what rate the ridership has come back to fill whatever that, that sort of delta is. So no matter what, there's, there's going to be a substantial structural deficit inside of our transportation system once the federal money dries up. And even if there's a second round or a third round infused in it, it may get us lower than what they think the structural deficit is, just because ridership's picked up. But we'll, we'll still have, just financially, we will, we will have a problem on our hands at some point in time, regardless of of sort of additional STEM. It might give us more time.
And, and I would just add to what Senator O'Connor just said, that, you know, with all that uncertainty, eliminating, you know, eliminating the ferry or eliminating the Green Bush, I think it's very hard to reestablish something once it's eliminated. And, uh, you know, we, we see how long it took to get the Green Bush line restored here on the South Shore. And, um, the, the consequences of that, you know, as everybody's mentioned, have been significant. At this point, we, we have over 50 people on this meeting this evening, and we so appreciate everyone who's joined us this evening and welcome you. I think what I'd like to do is open it up to questions or comments from the public, and to allow as many people an opportunity to speak as possible, I'm going to ask that if you I'm going to ask that if you, if you would like to be recognized, that you use the raise hand function. I would ask that you please direct your question or your comment to me as the chair. And then, you know, you see that we have a whole team of people here who, you know, will be able to respond. What I'm also going to ask again, just so that we can hear from as many folks as possible. I'm going to ask that questions and comments initially be confined to about three minutes. And then again, if we, if we want to cycle back and give folks an opportunity for follow-up, we'll do that as time permits, but that way, again, it will allow us to hear from as many of you as possible. When, when you are recognized by the chair, if you could please identify yourself by name and give your address, that would also be great. So with that, the first person I'll recognize, and I apologize if, if I've mispronouncing your name, Mr. Michael Segas.
Bear with me.
Hi, sir, but welcome.
Hi, thank you very much, I appreciate you taking my question. So I'm Michael Segas, my family and I live at 53 Lincoln Street here in Hingham. And we moved here in the beginning of last summer and absolutely love our new home. As you can imagine, a large driver for our selecting Hingham was access to the ferry. As well as the Green Bush Line. And I appreciate the, a couple of things very much that I've heard tonight, the creative ideas from our Chamber of Commerce Chair about alternative ways of ensuring the long-term viability of the ferry. Also pointing out the reasons beyond the obvious, why the ferry and, and the regional rail are so important. Environmental, but also public health. So my question is this, given the value, the, the economic and other impact that such decisions might take, have you begun evaluating whether there might be, should, should it be necessary, any legal recourse? Any paths that you might pursue in the unfortunate case that MBTA goes forward with that, with this, this approach?
Joe or Tom, is that, is that for you or is that for our, our legislators?
I, I'll, I'll start by saying the town, to my knowledge, has not been looking at litigation, which I think is what the question is. In response to possible action by the T, I think we will certainly be following this carefully to the extent that rules are not followed. We will certainly make sure that the town and our residents have their rights preserved, but we're not at that stage yet.
Okay, anyone else care to respond to Mr. Segas' question?
Oh, Mary, this is Joan, I would just add that, you know, I think we'd also have to look at what the overall sort of cut scenarios are. To see if the South Shore to Peter's earlier comment is being disproportionately impacted relative to the cuts as a whole. I, you know, I think, I think it's pretty much, I think you keep these things in the back of your mind, but, and follow how they are. But, you know, I think it's a little premature to see until we actually see what they're proposing, whether there would be any kind of a legal basis for that. So I think it's something we keep a weather eye to. The only other thing I'll say is that one question that we get repeatedly is, you know, this was big dig mitigation, both the ferry expansion as well as the Green Bush expansion. And I think it's an interesting question to ask, what, what obligations flow from those agreements? And relative to the Hull-Hingham-Boston-Massport piece, that is specifically intended to be handicapped accessible. And I think that that would be a really interesting question from a legal perspective to ask. Again, early to say, but perhaps to keep a weather on it, too.
Thank you both very much, and thank you for the question. Next, I'd like to recognize Jean Reynolds, please.
Yes, hi, good evening, my name is Jeannie Reynolds, 1004 Tucker's Lane, I live at Hingham Woods. I've lived here for about 15 years and the whole reason I bought my condo where I am is because of the proximity to the boat. I am the woman that, I think back in 2010 and then again in 2012, they tried to eliminate the services and I went on all the boats. And I gathered, I think almost about seven or eight thousand signatures and I did that on my own paper sheets. That's how important the ferry is to me. And right now with the Hull, I've signed the Hull petition, is that also covering the Hingham ferry and also like the airport ferry? Is it covering, is it all, all one together?
Joan, could you answer Ms. Reynolds' question?
You know, that's a great question, I think they're just talking ferry service, ferry service and, and imply that it would be Hingham and Hull and Boston and, and Massport. So I think that that is definitely a place where Hingham people can, Hingham residents and, and also not just Hingham residents, but Hingham riders. Because our ferries draw from a broader region than just our individual towns. But yes, I think everybody should, should go there and sign and certainly we look at it as a whole system. And we would be very loath to have them like parse it out in any way. There has been some discussion by the T about potentially just keeping the Charlestown Navy Yards or that inner harbor service. But we look at this as one system, one ferry operator, one contract, and it's all interrelated and it's all needs to be supported.
Thank you and thank you, thank you for the question.
I have one last question, can I ask one last one?
Yes, please.
If, if the worst-case scenario does happen, can private carriers still come in or would they eliminate or something? I mean, that's worst case, but and there'd be a lot more volume, a lot more cost and maybe lower amount of riders, but would they still allow that? Or, excuse me, a lower amount of runs? I know, I know Mass Bay Lines at one point, maybe 15 years ago, had its own run where it was two in the morning and, or two going in in the morning and one at night. They're not threatening actual using it, it's just the T's sponsorship of it, is that correct?
Who can best answer that question?
So, that's actually a great question and I think it's part of the false narrative that the T or the miss, this sort of the misunderstanding of how the system works. Relative to the Secretary's Office and the T. The, the, this is public transit and it needs to both connect and it is also subsidized. Most people aren't aware that all of our towns actually pay an assessment into the MBTA to support these kinds of services. So we already support it. When they talk about Fairbox recovery, it's one of the highest of the modes of transit that we have at 70%. But one of the things that Boston Harbor Cruises has been very clear about is that where they are, where they currently have highly subsidized rides, modes, say for example, New York. It's flourishing, there's still a lot of use, they're still, they're up pretty high at 50%. Where they have exclusively private services are closed, they can't actually withstand the economic pressures of it either. And so it really does need to be that partnership. Right now, the ferry services almost exclusively outsourced, the T does own four of the ferries that come in. It's the front nose, the front loaders, they own those, but they are managed by Boston Harbor Cruises. So it's outsourced as it is now, the operator's been pretty clear that, that, that it does need to still be a contract through the T. And it's unlikely that they would be able to manage that, the fares would just go so astronomically, no one could, no one really could afford to ride.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for both of your questions and also thank you for your efforts 10 years ago when, when we were faced with the same situation. As you were talking about going on all the trains and getting all the signatures, I'm reminded that it's particularly difficult to do advocacy right now with COVID. Because, you know, ordinarily we go onto the boats and onto the trains, which just makes it all the more important that, that we all work very hard and together to get the word out to our, our neighbors and fellow citizens who will be affected as we will be. The next person I'd like to recognize is Michael, Mr. Michael Nappi.
Good evening, everyone, thank you guys for, for doing this, my name is Michael Nappi, I live at 122 HMS Standard Drive in the shipyard. I guess I'd just add a couple of items to Joe's four bullet points that, that I think were summed up quite nicely. And I'm not sure how much of this factors in, but, you know, we spent a lot of time with that intermodal building, a lot of time and money. And, and then you have the parking lot there, so you have kind of existing things that, you know, certainly lend to seeing this continue. That would seem to be foolish to eliminate at this point, just, just on those premises alone. We also had a dry run twice, I've been here since 2011 and like the previous woman had mentioned, when they threatened cuts. It was actually maybe a week or two after we'd signed our PNS, that the headline hit that the ferry was going to go away. But we had two trial runs, right, we had the harbor freeze and that was an absolute disaster and for anyone who took the boat and then was forced onto the Green Bush Line that, that period of time. I mean, it was, it was terrible and it was a combination of weather then and train, you know, trains being unstable. But then we also had more recently, the docks going down or the main dock going down. So we've had kind of two test runs at this and I think both of them were in the short term kind of disastrous. You know, I, I wouldn't hesitate to kind of bring those up if, if you're not already planning to already. When the media, I guess my question is, when the media is quoting ridership and levels being down, are they just quoting post-pandemic? Because I'll tell you, when the, the main boat, not the Hull line, but the bigger boat, the, the main Hingham line. If you didn't get there 15 minutes early, you risked getting cut off and there are people on the boat saying, we need more boats. So we went from needing more boats to now potentially eliminating boats. And who's making the decision to run these? Because when they turn them on in July, full capacity, my wife's taken them a few times, I haven't had to use them yet. She's saying there's six, seven people on there. What, I mean, you can see where this, in July, you can see where this is going. So, I mean, would there be any, and I, I understand the point about, we don't want to shut it off because it would be hard to, you know, mothball, it'd be hard to turn it back on. But is there any consideration to saying, look, we have six or seven folks taking this every, you know, could we delay it to kind of stop the bleeding? And then I guess just that original question, where are those ridership stats coming from? Because they did not seem right at all to me, thank you guys.
Thank you, Joe, I think at the beginning, was it you who spoke about ridership and said that pre-pandemic, we were at 98% capacity or was that maybe Senator O'Connor?
I think it was Representative Muschino who gave that number, but I will tell you that when it comes to ferry ridership. I have turned to Martha Buick, who was on the line here, who is expert at all, all of these, and David Alshuler. In, in terms, in terms of the numbers, there are surveys that were done that are published by the T. And with respect to Green Bushes as well as the T, I can certainly look at those sources, maybe David or Martha can, can add right now additional information.
Maybe I'll just give it to Joan first to answer the rest of Mr. Nappi's questions and then I was going to recognize Martha.
I think Mr. Nappi made a couple of really interesting points that I just wanted to highlight, not the least of which, and this sort of speaks to Ms. Reynolds' remarks as well, is that should they make really draconian cuts or eliminate it? You can't just turn it on and turn it off like a light switch. This is infrastructure like any other and then human capital like any other, your workforce. So if they were to cut the ferries significantly for, for a significant amount of time, you would have ferries reallocated to other places like New York. You would lose seasoned licensed captains and it, those are, those are workforce members who are at a premium and hard to come by. And so, so you would end up losing a lot more than you would glean in the savings. And so I think to the extent that, that you're making that argument, it's actually really savvy and really smart. And part of the overall economic one that we should be making is that, you know, you will not necessarily glean $15 million in savings. You will be something less. I think the other piece is that they, the infrastructure that they are responsible for, such as things like peers, that is always there. They will never not be responsible for those things, so they won't necessarily glean the savings by using them and they will always have to keep them up. And then to your other point, I think that the economic investments that we have made, both at the public-private level, just using the shipyard as an example, have been in the hundreds of millions. And so I think this is part of what, you know, Peter was talking about early in terms of, you know, the investments that we've made in, in our economy and they're flourishing. I think, you know, to, to walk away from those assets, those, you know, they become, you know, stranded assets and will undermine everything. So I think those are excellent, excellent points that, and I think some of that's wrapped into what Joe had, Joe's letter, I did get to see a draft of it. And I guess the only other thing I would say on the ridership is actually Senator O'Connor that was quoting some of the ridership. But the one ridership number that I always sticks with me is that for 2016 to 2019, the ferry ridership was increasing. It's the only mode of transportation in the MBTA system where the ridership was actually increasing. And where the fee rate structure actually is a moneymaker for, for the, for the T itself, because of the way that we subsidize it through our assessments. So we were on the upswing and we're well positioned to advocate for more and building out the system at the moment that the pandemic hit. But I'll turn it over to Senator O'Connor because I, he's the one with the, I think with the, the numbers.
Yeah, so ridership for Green Bush was pre-pandemic at peak, during the peak rides that they have, 98 to 104%. We know that because pre-COVID, we were advocating for more passenger cars for the Green Bush Line because it had been so successful so quickly. It actually outperformed where they thought it was going to be at that point in time and they were putting in capital requests to get more passenger cars. The 2019 numbers for the ferry was, there was 1.6 million riders in the Hingham, Hingham Hull route. As Joan had said, there's 140 people that work there, there's a lot of good data that drives that, it's, it's what's happening now. That's basically driving all those decisions that they're going to make. We were on a call earlier today, Joan and I, in Representative Murphy's office with the Metropolitan Planning Council. And they had said, it's great where the transportation system was pre-COVID, but it's going to play a little bit less in their decision-making process just because they're basically going off of what's happening now. And they think, once we get back to where we were, which I have no doubt that we will, I do think that there'll be a shift in the commercial real estate market. But I do think that there will still be a huge demand on the South Shore to take both the Green Bush and the ferry as modes of public transportation to Boston. I especially think that doubled down with the environmental goals that we're setting for ourselves. And so, once we get there, they're basically saying, all right, as you progress in ridership and people going back to Boston, we'll progress in, you know, putting more and more availability of this public transportation, both on Green Bush and in the ferry out there. And so my stance on this whole thing is, make sure that we preserve both those services so that that can happen. And then as that happens for our residents, we all advocate to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not left behind. And as people from the South Shore need to get into Boston and those numbers go up, we get those, we get the modes of transportation back.
And, you know, I, I'd just add one thing to that, which is that, you know, those cuts in some ways could become a self-fulfilling prophecy. And so at that, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'd like to recognize at this point Martha Buick, please.
Thank you very much, Mary, and thank you very much Selectmen and also our state representatives Joan and Senator and Peter Foreman for all the work you've done. It's really very heartening and very encouraging, although there are a lot, there's a long path to follow. I have mostly sort of comments and some.
Martha, could I interrupt and just ask if you could give your address for the record? I think many of us know where you are.
No, sorry, Martha, Martha Buick, I'm on 34 Otis Hill Road in Hingham.
Thank you.
Okay, fine, so a number of sort of comments or questions that come off of the comments that you have made. One of them is transit-oriented development, we've now established that there's at least. Um, one of them is, um, transit oriented development. We've now established that there's at least a half billion dollars worth of investment down at the Hingham Shipyard. The question I have for Peter and for the rest of the elected representatives is, is there a commitment when there's a transit oriented development in the Commonwealth and there's a transit facility nearby? I don't know the answer to that, and I think it would be important to find out if in fact, private developers have made that kind of investment. What type of, what type of responsibility does the Commonwealth have to be partners in that? So that's one. Secondly, seniors, seniors are considered a transit critical community for the purpose of making cuts. And Hingham has a huge population of seniors and apparently one of the largest populations over 70 years old. And as, uh, Sluckman Fisher has pointed out, a good percentage of seniors take the, um, ferry to, uh, Long Wharf. Does that count? Should that be emphasized in the, um, comments that are being sent in? Thirdly, Representative, uh, Maschino has mentioned, um, the scenarios being developed by the T. None of those scenarios deal at all with the ferries. I was shocked to see that. And I wondered whether there shouldn't be a fourth scenario established that focuses on the ferries and the flexibility that they provide within the harbor, including Harbor Islands and the various communities, and also transit critical communities that could be served. Um, then the next point is, um, one problem is that people often dismiss the ferries as luxury transit. In fact, as others have pointed out, it's probably the least expensive, the most cost effective. And I think that there can be an economic case made for, um, the cost effectiveness of the ferries, which makes me wonder why they're top on the target list. Uh, the next point is the Boston Harbor Islands. Uh, both the Hingham Shipyard and Boston are service areas that provide access for schoolchildren from Boston, as well as schoolchildren from the South Shore and others from the South Shore to the Harbor Islands. Along the line of what Sluckman, uh, Joe Fisher has been saying about the health provided by the ferries in the open air, access to parks is a really significant aspect of this COVID period. And in fact, the ferries, which do provide service to the islands, perhaps the service could be extended earlier in the spring and later into the fall next year to provide, um, sort of multiple purpose for the ferry, not just commute, but also Harbor Islands access to the, um, parklands. Um, the next, a point was the care money that comes in from the federal government. I was looking through the points of the care budget under FTA and noticed that there is a designated category for ferries. I haven't looked into it, but it's something we might well pursue. And along that line, the Hingham Shipyard Terminal is considered one of the national intermodal connectors because of the size that it represents. That makes it eligible both for FTA as well as federal highway, federal money. A good deal of the money that's gone into the ferry service, especially the terminal, came from, uh, Congressman Delahunt set aside. And, um, as, as opposed to say, Green Bush Rail, which was all state, um, money. So I think that, uh, we could search for more federal funds, um, uh, keeping in mind that the ferries are eligible for both highway and for transit monies. Um, next point, the Quincy and the Braintree MBTA garages are closed or due to be closed, as I understand it. And if they're closed, that means we're going to need to have more transit services during the period of closure. My question is, when do these ferries due to be cut? If they are? Is it now? And is it before the, is it before this period of construction in Quincy and Braintree? Is this, and if it is planned to be happening, can they continue to be allowed to run while the garages are closed at least? So that we have transit backup. Another point is the Brockton commuter rail service extension. Uh, Brockton is one of the transit critical communities, makes very good sense to expand commuter rail. But if in fact it's expanded, what happens to the capacity on Green Bush and the Plymouth branches? There's not enough space on the, on the Braintree bottleneck, as you know. Um, and then finally, um, talking about big dig mitigation. Um, I know it's a pie in the sky in a fantasy wonderland, but the MBTA was saddled with all of the debt from the 14 transit mandates that were required as part of the big dig in order for the permits to go forward, uh, in the agreement with, um, the D, uh, EOTC with the highway, Mass Highway and with the Conservation Law Foundation. And Pioneer Institute in the past has proposed that perhaps the MBTA should be relieved of the burden of the sort of $5 billion of transit mandates that were required, and that should be put into the, um, onto the general obligations of the Commonwealth. And Senator O'Connor, I don't, I don't know if you'd have any comment on that. But those are the thoughts and those are the points I'd like to raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I've, I've written down, um, I think I've written down, uh, 10, 10 excellent points and questions. I think some of them are points that we want to ma, maybe take for the board's letter. But let me just recap a couple of the questions and maybe ask, um, you know, folks to comment. I think Martha's first question, she highlighted the significant amount of development at the shipyard. And the question was, is there any sort of obligation on the part of the Commonwealth with respect to those developments that have occurred?
I don't know for certain, but I don't think any of the developments that I'm aware of were fully, um, contracted, public, private arrangements where there was some value capture, uh, given. Or, uh, there was a firm commitment if a private developer came in, the state would do it. Interesting points. I think that has occurred in other places, and I think even in Massachusetts. Um, possibly out on the green line, there may be something like that, but I don't, I'm not aware we have it on any of the South Shore stops. But there is a moral obligation, I think, because the state has been pushing for more housing near transit. And people have made these investments. And even though they won't feel necessarily obligated to the developers who have already sunk in money, I think other state people, uh, outside of the T would be, um, very sensitive to the fact that if they do this, it will discourage more of the housing agenda that they have. But it's, uh, it's a good point. I, I try to check on that, Martha, a little bit, but I don't think there will be any obligation uh, to private investors on any of our projects.
Thank you. Um, I think the next, uh, the next point, uh, was with respect to seniors. And I was able to take a quick look at, uh, the letter that Joe's been working on on behalf of the town that speaks to that. Um, there was a question of a fourth, fourth scenario with the ferries. Um, I might look to, to Joan. I don't, I don't know if, um, I was not really sure. Maybe you could respond to that?
So, um, I, I think we definitely could ask for, um, sort of a fourth scenario relative to the ferries. Um, you know, I honestly, I'm not sure what will be persuasive with them at this point in the game, but, um, I think the, uh, trying to get them to broaden their criteria relative, especially to things like, um, the seniors and, and as critical, uh, transit relative to seniors. We are a growing district. Um, I think Hull's already at 35% seniors and we're sort of heading more towards 40%. Um, and across the whole district by, I think, 30, 30, so 2030, excuse me. So I think that's an excellent point. Um, as far as a fourth scenario, though, um, I'm not sure how that would, how that would really work. I'm not sure how that would really work, but we can definitely make that request of them.
Thank you. Um, I think there were points made about, um, the ferry being cost effective and Senator O'Connor's previous comments about, um, about the ridership on the ferry and the fact that it was making money. Uh, that, that got my attention. Um, Martha brought up a point about access to the Harbor Islands, which, um, again, I think is, you know, something that we can consider with respect to our letter. In terms of the CARES Act, I think what I heard Senator O'Connor mentioning earlier, and Pat, maybe correct me if I'm wrong here, but that we are getting CARES money right now, but the, some of what's being proposed right now is in anticipation of that CARES Act money running out. Um, is, is what I think I heard you saying earlier.
Yeah, it's all about right now, we're, we're plugging the hole. And how big of a hole do we want to climb out of when it's, when all that federal money dries up? That's basically the, the easiest way to explain it.
Yep. Um, I think Martha made a great point with respect to the Intermodal Center and, um, uh, that's just something that's recently opened. Um, a, a question maybe, and Joan, I don't know if you can, um, answer this, but, um, Martha made the point with the garages being closed for construction. Do we have a sense of when these proposed cuts might take place? Um, if, if I heard you earlier, you mentioned that a vote would be taking place on December 7th of the Fiscal Management Control Board. But when, when might, when might any, uh, service changes take place?
So ostensibly, they are working now and taking a vote now, looking ahead to fiscal year 2022, which would begin in, um, right, because we're in fiscal year 2021 right now. So we're looking ahead to fiscal year 2022, which would begin July 1st. Um, I have, and they talk, that's what they talk about. But I have in my conversations, both the Secretary's Office and with MBTA, um, potentially cuts could happen sooner than that. Um, because they're both dealing with budget deficits now, as, as Senator O'Connor was talking about, um, as well as looking ahead to sort of that cliff, um, that would ostensibly begin with the next fiscal year. So I actually think we could see some of these cuts, um, sooner than that, um, and as early as the spring. And I've definitely heard people say that. I don't know how reliable or not it is. Um, I think we'll know, I think we'll know much more on the, on the ninth, on November 9th, relative to what their actual plan is. Everything right now we've seen as a draft. Um, but I will tell you, the other thing I've heard them say is that they, they talk about the cuts as temporary as well as permanent. And I think what they're, um, what I've heard other sort of people say, sort of offline, has been around. Uh, well, you know, would, would like to be able to like make temporary cuts and then, you know, stimulus came along, it'd be, it'd be permanent. But I've also heard them say that, um, permanent cuts and that they would re-envision that how things would come forward, looking ahead to new scenarios. So, um, it, they haven't been sending the most clear message. Uh, so I think we should sort of take them at their face value of the cuts will likely be permanent. They could be as early as the spring.
Thank you. Um, I see another hand. Uh, I'd like to recognize the person who's calling in, Katie and Phil Gallagher.
Hi, everyone. This is Phil Gallagher here from 222 South Street in Hingham. Uh, so just like to thank Senator O'Connor, Representatives Maschino and Murphy. It's been very interesting and it's really great to see everyone talking about this. I would just like to build on a point that was made earlier about obviously the increased congestion going on to the I-93. And someone mentioned the environmental impact, in fact, which is a very important one. I'd also like to think that the MBTA and whoever's making the decision, look at the greater Boston area as a whole and don't just make the decisions in individual regions. And if they do, we could argue that the Green Bush Line is literally the only line that comes through here, right down to Marshfield. So it would essentially cut that off for a large region of the greater Boston area. Other areas in the metropolitan area of Boston do have alternatives. They've got slightly better transport links and options, whether it's commuter rail or whether it's, um, the, the, the T or the subway. So I'd just like to hope that people start to look at it as a holistic piece and not just where they can cut things. Because it's very easy to cut the ferry.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, uh, with a question or would, uh, like to make a comment? Um, so I see a hand raised. Um, I'm going to recognize Mr. Mark Buonagrio, Jorio.
Thank you, Buonagrio. Mark Buonagrio, 10 Cliff Road. Um, thank you for us, to our elected representatives for this, and thank you for Peter with the chamber. I know how much the chamber does behind the scenes for all of us. Um, I had just a few quick thoughts, um, sort of piggybacking on some, what some other people have said, I'd like to see us involve some more towns because as I'm thinking about the environmental impact, we've already seen how much, um, the compressor has impacted not only us, but Weymouth and Quincy. And if you think about the number of cars that are going to be on 3A going within that area too. And with the bridge going up, the traffic and environmental impacts on those communities is going to be pretty massive. So we should loop them in. You know, I do think that if there's a compromise in terms of, I know service is limited now, but if it's, hey, we eliminate the 10 o'clock runs or, you know, the noon time runs to save the commuting times. Um, if it's something that we could push for, better than losing the ferry completely or the commuter rail. Like with the conservation law lawsuit, I don't think the commuter rail will ever go away permanently, but the ferry, I could see it, and I think it would be devastating. To a point Peter made about the impacts that it has on the, um, greater business community and housing. Um, I know I've made deals on the ferry or at the shipyard of people who have taken the ferry in. I also think that the Boston Harbor Cruises, they're running these ferries in the summertime for, um, the aquarium for the whale watches. And what happens to that? Because if they can't keep those boats and now it's Hornblower who's running them, they've got operations around the country. If they move these ferries out of here, that's going to affect the aquarium too. And I think that's a point to bring up and get their support. I think that, you know, the landlord and the tenants in the shipyard, I hope that they're all advocating for this as well. And we're trying to pull them in because it obviously affects all of them. And lastly, for advocacy, um, Mary, I know that you mentioned that it's not easy to, you know, sign people up in person anymore because of this, but, or maybe that was Joan, forgive me if I'm wrong. But we should be pushing this out on social media as much as possible. I know that both Senator O'Connor and Representative Maschino have been getting that out there on their pages. But we've got a large and active population at social media now with people home. And I think it's probably the best way that we can get the word out to people and get them to sign on to these petitions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just saw a hand and then it, it disappeared. Um, um, whoops. Um, I'm going to recognize someone calling in with iPhone CAF.
Hello, I'm Kathy Fairhurst. I'm at 26 Wampatuck Road, within hearing distance of the boat whistle. And I just want to weigh in to say that I also listened in to, um, the meeting between the MBTA and MassDOT last week. And they proffered three scenarios. And none of those scenarios are anything that we can actually imagine at this point. And it feels to me all so premature to start making these decisions in December before we have a vaccine, before any of these scenarios. And I think the scenarios were broadly, um, that there is little return to the services, both the Green Bush Line and the commuter ferry service, that there would be maybe 50% and then that we would have a full return. So very, very basic scenarios. But none of those are anything that we can at this moment in time imagine. And it would seem to me an argument to make that they reduce service more comprehensively rather than target our Green Bush Line and our commuter ferry, both the Hull and the Hingham Ferry, um, at this point in time, be, because it's simple to do that. And it, it, it just seems to me really unfair. Um, there's been a few changes in the ferry service. I'm now taking a early boat in the morning that takes us into Hull to Pemberton Point before we go into Long Wharf. And that's serving me just fine. If they could do more of that, um, maybe that would help. Maybe they could look around in more comprehensively. Um, do the same kind of thing with bus services and T services. I don't know. But it seems to me so premature before we have a vaccine, before we have any idea what the return to any kind of normalcy will be, that they should make this choice. And at the same time, I want to thank you very much, Mary, and, um, all who put this meeting together. It's been incredibly informative. Martha's ideas were wonderful. She got me thinking. Thank you, Peter. Um, I think it's huge to keep in mind that many of us step off the ferry on a Thursday night, whipped and need to get through Friday and stop and go have a meal at the shipyard. I mean, these are, or, or we stop at the market or we stop at Trader Joe's. I mean, it's become a way of life for us who take the ferry, not just living in this beautiful community, but actually utilizing what's available to us there at the shipyard because of the ferry service there. Anyway, that's my piece. Thank you all very much.
I, um, uh, I would just note that, um, you're giving us great information to help with our letter, but I'd also point out- I'd also point out that Joan at the beginning talked about, you know, why telling our stories about why we value public transit. And I would encourage all those who have spoken so eloquently tonight about what public transit means to you to share those stories, because they they add a dimension to this that that we can't always add. I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Swenson.
Sure. Yeah, Tom Swenson, I saw the notice of this on social media on Facebook, so I thought I'd come in.
Mr. Swenson, could you give me your address, please, for the record?
Yes, I live in the shipyard at 111 Fitzroy.
Thank you.
One of the apartments. And precisely the reason why I moved down here was to take the ferry into work. I work up in Cambridge. And it's the easiest thing in the world for me to hop on my bike, roll over there, roll off it, go into town. And I've been buying a, you know, getting a ferry pass for the past three and a half, four years. So spent a pretty substantial amount of money. I think it's like 300 and something bucks a month or whatever that is. Haven't gotten one since March, since it shut down. Don't take it. I always thought taking the ferry was a pretty civilized way to live. Get your coffee in the morning, a beer and eat. Life is good. But what it comes down to, if the ferry service is canceled, I'll just move out of town. You know, there's, there's really no reason for me to live down here. There's much, much easier places and things to do. So that's a direct economic, economic cost to the town of Hingham. And, you know, it it's a nice self, nice little self-contained community right in there where you can do the shopping over at the, at the Fresh Market, Trader Joe's, meals in the restaurants, walk my dog in the area. But if I, if I can't do that, and if I have to drive, even going up into Cambridge, but there is no traffic now, I I I just hate driving. It's a pain. So basically, just wanted to make that observation.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. And again, I would encourage you as well to, we've, we've shared some of the contact information. We're going to have it up on the website as well, and at Joan's website, joanmoschino.com to to share these stories. Martha?
Can you hear me? It's Martha Bjork, 34 Otis Hill Road. Just one final point. I was intrigued to hear Peter Foreman talk about the possibility of moving the ferries out of the MBTA. And I think that that's worth an entire discussion of itself. And I don't know when that, when it's appropriate. But I want to point out that there has been a public partner in ferry transportation in Massachusetts and in Boston Harbor since 1631. And just point out that MBTA means Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. And the motto of the day is keep the bay and Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. And but I do want to point out that that for, because of the complexity of the permit relationships, that it's important to have a public partner. And finally, that Massport was the public partner when the ferry started to hang them in 1975, 45 years ago. So there are possibilities, and I think Peter suggested maybe even looking at a new steamship authority, but that's complicated as well. So as long as we don't lose this treasure that we have that services so many people and so many functions, let's, let's do what we need to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Martha. I don't see any other hands. I I think at this point, before we conclude the discussion on this agenda item, oops, Mr. Segaf, did you have one other question or comment?
Yeah, only a clarification. So I hate litigation, and I didn't want you to think that I thought we should be suing people. But in my experience, the, the, the case that was made, the, the several points add up to what would would be a reasonable subject for, for litigation. And all I'd suggest is that a tiny bit of effort be put in to assess to get a professional opinion that that would suggest, you know what, if, if you make this unfortunate decision, there would be grounds for litigation. And the notion is not that we want, anybody wants to get into that battle, but that the specter of such a suit would mean that if you got a friendly judge, it could give you an injunction until the matter was heard. They're probably not saving the money in the 2021 or 2022 fiscal year budget. And just that notion that, you know what, this is a there's grounds to believe that someone might give this fair hearing, which means we're not going to achieve our monetary, our fiscal savings goals quickly and easily. They won't go down without a fight. That sometimes is enough to at least get people to think about other, other places to look. That was really the point that I wanted to make, and I want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. Joe, oops, I see one, I'll take one final question or comment. I'd like to recognize Teresa Gordon. I think you need to unmute.
Sorry. Yes. Hi. My name is actually O'Malley Walsh. I'm using my boyfriend's. And I live at 21R Pioneer Road. I am a recent graduate. I graduated from college in 2019. I just moved down to Hingham last October. Actually, I accepted my first job out of college at Harvard, so I've been using both the Green Bush Line and was anticipating using the commuter ferry for the first time this summer, because why not enjoy the nice weather on a boat during my commute, my very long commute? And I just wanted to say thank you very much for opening my eyes to the different things that this will affect. I'm currently trying to buy my first home somewhere along the South Shore. Now, if this decides to, if the Green Bush Line is affected and the ferry is cut, then I may have to start looking somewhere closer to the city. That will impact my commute. I'll have to look towards something else. I also have, I'm lucky to have a benefit of having a 50% off MBTA pass as one of my employment benefits that may or may not be needed if things change with all of these. So I just wanted to say thank you for opening my eyes to the different things that it will affect in addition to just my daily commute.
Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome to Hingham, and we hope that, we hope that you'll stay in our community.
Me too.
Yeah. It some of those last few comments really sort of bring a lot of this home. You know, as, as a community that tries to be welcome and inclusive and bringing people in and giving them different options for, you know, how they get to work and you know, without something like a ferry, it's hard to commute to a place like Mr. Swenson asked to commute in Cambridge. So you know, clearly, for, for some of us, the elimination of these services will result in some pretty significant life decisions. With that, I think what I'd like to do is conclude the public discussion. I would like to thank Senator O'Connor, Representatives Murphy and Moschino and Mr. Foreman for taking the time, for sharing the information, for listening to, you know, to many of our citizens. We thank you for your continued advocacy on this. We know that you are all working tirelessly. And, and we appreciate it. Joe, I know that a draft of, of, of the letter was circulated to the board before this meeting. I know I had a chance to just briefly look at it. And I know that the board has posted a meeting for Thursday at 6:00. I just wondered, in light of the discussion that we've heard tonight, what would be helpful to you in terms of feedback from Bill and I with respect to the letter? Or would you like us to provide comments to Tom and Michelle? How? How would you like to handle that this evening?
Well, working backwards, I think the ultimate goal is to get the board to approve the letter. And that, and that would happen then on a meeting scheduled for Thursday. And so moving back from there, it would be helpful to get by tomorrow your comments and Bill's comments, so that I can work to reflect them in a revised letter that we can ultimately review and vote on on Thursday. So I think that would be very helpful. And also, you know, I didn't, I suspect that you will be doing this, but one thing I'm going to be doing is taking into consideration the comments we've gotten from other elected officials, as well as the number of residents who've taken the time to participate in this meeting. It's just incredible. The people are showing up. They know what's going on. They're making incredibly important points. And I'll make sure they're reflected in, in the communications that ultimately comes out from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Bill, how does that sound to you?
Right. I think, you know, I read the letter before tonight. I think it the draft that we have going is already strong, and if we can incorporate some of the comments we hear tonight, I'll be happy to sign it on Thursday night.
So I'm just going to ask my fellow board members to make sure that Tom or Michelle gets your comments. Let's say by 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. I know it's been pulling a letter together like this is, is very difficult. So we'll do that. Joe, just, you know, a couple of things that jumped out at me that I heard. And again, I, I only quickly looked at the letter, so I apologize if they were in there. But I think somebody mentioned the Intermodal Center. And, you know, the fact that, that a lot of money was invested in that, but also, you know, the idea of the Intermodal Center is, you know, you get off the boat and, you know, you can get onto the bus and, you know, so that the connectivity. I think that someone else, so I think it was Martha, mentioned the access to the Boston Harbor Islands. And you know, I know sometimes when we're on the water in the summer, you see those boats out on the weekends. And they're full of people. And for many people in Boston, that is the only way to to, to, to get to some of those islands. And that may also be an opportunity to weave in, someone else made the point that a lot of those boats are used for whale watching. And to the extent that that may, you know, affect, affect the aquarium, I think it may just sort of say that, hey, the, the impact of this will not just be felt on the South Shore. But for many people who want to enjoy the Boston Harbor Islands and so those were just a couple of things, but Bill and I will commit by, by noon tomorrow to have any feedback for Tom or Michelle. And then the board will meet on Thursday. We'll take a last look. We'll sign, we'll vote to sign the letter. And then, and then send it off.
Great.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is to consider an adjustment of the Town of Hingham 2020 Special Town Meeting quorum requirements pursuant to Section 7 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020. People may recall that back in June, when we had our annual town meeting, the board at the time made a vote to reduce the quorum. Based on Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, that actually allowed municipalities to adjust quorum requirements based on their form of government, if you were an open town meeting or a closed town meeting. And back in June, the board actually voted to reduce the quorum to 200, which is the night two quorum for an annual town meeting. In consultation with Town Moderator Michael Puzo, Chair of the Advisory Committee, Bob Curley, I think, Tom, you're, you are recommending to the board that, that we adopt this same quorum for, for this meeting. I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, no, I, I think it's the right thing to do. It's better safe than sorry. You know, we were, we were fortunate in the Springtown meeting, we saw a little over 400 participants, which was great. We would have met the 300 person quorum. But that was tight. We didn't, we didn't get over 300 until the, until, just, just as the meeting was scheduled to start. So, you know, you just never know in, in this situation. And I think the town's business is important. We're doing, we're holding the meeting in a very safe environment, and I feel that people should come out and can do so safely. But, you know, for, for cautious purposes, I think this is a prudent move.
Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom?
Is this the same resolution that we're considering that we voted on for the prior town meeting?
In essence, yes. Attorney Coughlin has reviewed this and approved the language.
And this is a whimsical suggestion, is that we could actually help, see if we can hold the meeting on a ferry boat. It would be outside.
A lot of fresh air.
A lot of fresh air, but
Will the bar be open?
To make sure we're staying within the Hingham. No, I mean, but, but obviously, it's, it's going to be held at at the high school, on the fields, just as we did before. And I think the suggestion is prudent.
I was going to have to confirm that it was 300 for a right foot town meeting. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment before the board votes? Okay, I actually received an updated vote list by email, so I think I will read the motion. I'll make a motion that pursuant to Section 7 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, the Board of Selectmen hereby vote to prescribe the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum for the Town of Hingham 2020 Special Town Meeting scheduled for Saturday, November 21st, 2020 at 200, subject to approval of the Town Moderator.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Al? Mary?
Aye.
And we have one other vote that I'll do before the COVID-19 update, which is relative to this, and this is to sign the warrant. We all received a copy of that, and Tom and Michelle, thank you, and thank you to Sharon Perfetti, who, as always, does a wonderful job putting the warrant together. I also got revised language for this vote. So I will or actually, before making a motion, Joe or Bill, do either of you have any questions about signing the warrant?
No, I have the, I have the language and I'm comfortable with that.
Oh, okay. You've got the revised?
I do.
Excellent. Okay. Before I maybe ask you to take that motion, is there anyone in the public who has a question about signing of the warrant? Okay, seeing none, Joe, could you please make that motion?
Sure. I'll move to sign and issue the warrant for the Town of Hingham 2020 Special Town Meeting scheduled for Saturday, November 21st, 2020, pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaws Article 2 and Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Mary?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. COVID-19 update, Tom?
Thank you very much, Mary. I didn't realize I muted myself. So as of today, the Mass Department of Public Health is reporting 149,361 confirmed cases in Massachusetts, of which 11,294 are in Plymouth County. This past week marked our second week in the state's red COVID-19 category with the reported 395 confirmed COVID-19 cases in Hingham. The state shifted its reporting of local COVID-19 numbers from Wednesdays to Thursdays. So we'll find out tomorrow, this coming Thursday, if we'll remain in, in the red for a third consecutive week. As we've stated before, prolonged period in the red category could negatively impact our local economy and our ability to enjoy many of the sectors and activities that have cautiously reopened over the past few months. Our Health Department continues to work with the state's Community Tracing Collaborative and State Epidemiologists to try to contain the spread of COVID-19. If you are contacted by local or state public health officials or contact tracing for contact tracing purposes, it is critical that you provide it is critical that you provide the information they request. If you are subject to a quarantine, a negative test will not lift the quarantine. You must remain home for the fourteen-day period and refrain from engaging in school, sports, work, and other activities. We are all struggling with pandemic fatigue at this point. So please reach out if you need help. The Mass Department of Mental Health offers several resources and tips for reducing stress, boosting mental and emotional health, and engaging in healthy coping strategies. We'll post a link to these resources on the town's website. You can also call two-one-one, which is the state's free twenty-four-hour COVID information and referral hotline to find out about mental health resources. At this point, Mary, I'd like to turn it over to Michelle for some information on voting.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. Um, so I just wanted to remind folks that they have several options still to vote in the state slash presidential election, if you've not done so already. The Clerk's Office reporting, the Clerk's Office is reporting that over nine thousand people have voted thus far in early voting, which is amazing. Um, in-person early voting is taking place in the second floor central meeting room at Town Hall this week during normal Town Hall business hours, which are as follows for the rest of the week. So Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, and Thursday, October twenty-ninth, from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM. And Friday, October thirtieth, from eight-thirty AM to one PM. That is the last day for early voting in person. Town Hall is open only for early voting this week. The town offices are closed and staff are working remotely. Residents can also vote in person on Tuesday, November third, of course, from seven AM to eight PM, and polling places are as follows. Precincts one through four are at the high school at seventeen Union Street. Precincts five and six are at the middle school at eleven oh-three Main Street. And Precinct five A is at Linden Ponds at two oh-one Linden Ponds Way. For both early voting and voting on November third, we are taking COVID nineteen precautions with respect to social distancing and keeping polling areas clean and safe, and we're asking everyone to wear a mask when entering the voting areas. Many residents have chosen to vote by mail instead of voting in person to minimize the risk of COVID nineteen. The deadline to request a mail-in ballot is tomorrow at five PM. And there is a link to that application on the Town Clerk's website. Anyone wishing to still request a mail-in ballot can fill out that application and drop it in the drop box at the end of the Town Hall driveway to make sure that we get it in time before tomorrow's deadline. In terms of returning the mail-in ballots themselves, residents can also put them in that same drop box at the end of the Town Hall driveway. The deadline to return the mail-in ballots for the state slash presidential election is November third. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any questions or comments for Tom or Michelle?
No questions. Um, just reinforcing Michelle's message that we should all get out and vote. Thank you.
Bill?
Uh, no questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I would just add, uh, you know, as Tom talked about COVID, um, I was reading an article today, and Milton has had to close two, has had to take two schools, one of them is their high school, and revert to remote learning uh, for the next few weeks because of the number of COVID cases. Other high schools in the area that have had to close for the same reason include Abington, Rockland, Marblehead, and Wilmington. Um, so as we continue to see national and state numbers rise, uh, we, we all need to be mindful, and as Tom said, uh, there is a bit of COVID fatigue that is setting in as the days are getting shorter and it's getting colder. The realization of, of what we all may be having to deal with through the winter, I think is setting in. Um, but I also know that we have a number of parents who feel very strongly that they would like our children to remain in school and are hoping that we can accelerate uh, the return to classroom learning. Um, to the extent that the COVID cases are on the rise, that works against the efforts to uh, to increase the amount of in-person instruction hours, and hopefully we'll keep all that in mind. Um, I would also just add that uh, as Michelle mentioned about um, mail-in voting, um, there is a drop box at the end of Town Hall, so to the extent that people are getting a ballot, um, you know, while, while things are getting mailed here in Hingham, we, we continue to hear that the post office is often getting stressed, so um, hopefully that mailbox is a convenient location for people to drop things off. Um, next is a public comment. Uh, we invite uh, anyone to comment for up to three minutes. Uh, we ask that your comment relate to topics within the scope of responsibility for the Board of Selectmen, and that remarks are presented in a respectful manner that do not indulge in personalities. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment at this time? Uh, seeing none. Uh, we have uh, Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Tom?
Not tonight, Mary. Thank you.
Uh, Michelle?
Nothing from me either. Thank you.
Joe?
I actually have a question for Tom's uh, Administrator report. Which was nothing, but um, are the, are the videos available for the police and fire? Uh, and if so, how do members of the public access them?
Yes, they are on our website. Now, we'll turn that question over to our Assistant Town Administrator extraordinaire.
So, so far, we've put two videos out, and we'll have two more to follow. We have a, sort of a project overview of what's going to be before the special town meeting in terms of the property acquisition on November twenty-first. And then we also have a video that's a tour of North Fire Station. Both of those are on the website. I believe they're on the special town meeting website, as well as the Public Safety Building Committee website. Um, we've also posted links to them on social media and have tried to do news flashes on the homepage as well. We'll be coming out this week with a interview with Chief Jones from the Police Department that talks about the space challenges in our current facilities there. And then the last in this video series will be an interview with Director of Elder Services Jennifer Young um, and a tour of her space as well. So please stay tuned for those um, videos that are coming.
Thank you. And I just think it's important that members of the public, if they have the time, look at those videos, because they really will be making a very strong case why we need to move forward with the uh, public safety facility building.
And I should have mentioned that all of them will be playing on Harbor Media's um, TV channels as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for asking, Joe. Uh, Bill?
Good thanks. Um, you know, it's morning, it was a, it was a power outage in a part of town. And a friend of mine who's new to town called me and didn't really know who to contact, so I contacted Hingham Light on behalf of this person. And uh, you know, within minutes, the light company uh, had had the power restored. And it just, you know, reminded me just, you know, what a wonderful light plant we have, and um, how, just how unbelievably responsive they are to those type of situations. Um, so that's the first thing I wanted to say. And secondly, um, Saturday night is um, uh, Halloween, and you know, I will be out there with my family around town, trick or treating. That's one of my people to uh, have fun, but also be safe and to um, ensure that they follow the CDC guidelines for um, safety and sanitation with respect to handling um, uh, the candy and interaction with people, especially with children. So that's all I have.
If, if I could just add to that, Bill, uh, there are, guide, those CDC guidelines for Halloween are available on our website.
Yeah, thank you.
And Bill?
Thank you.
Can you disclose what your costume's going to be, Bill?
You know, I, I don't wear a costume, but I certainly eat a lot of my kids' candy when they're going to see it.
Uh, um, I only had one thing, uh, which is that uh, yesterday, yeah, yesterday, um, I actually recorded remarks for Veterans Day. Um, you know, everybody is aware that, that Hingham, Hingham celebrates our veterans in many ways and honors and remembers them. And Veterans Day is, um, there is typically a ceremony at Town Hall. We have uh, you know, we have the Hingham High School band there. We have our veterans standing. Um, when uh, their military hymn is played, which is always so moving. Um, we have awards recognition of the Veteran of the Year. And uh, this year, thanks to uh, to VSO German and the Veterans Council and Lisa Potts, uh, the ceremony is actually being filmed so that it will be viewed um, on November eleventh at eleven AM. And um, so anyway, uh, as is the custom uh, in my capacity as chair, uh, I, I delivered remarks for it. And um, you know, it's uh, it will not be the same, but I am so grateful to uh, to VSO German and his team for coming up with a creative way to allow us to honor and acknowledge um, this very important event. So uh, on November eleventh at eleven AM, there will be a veteran ceremony, and we hope, we hope everyone will tune in. Um, I think that's it for tonight. As people heard, we will be meeting on Thursday at six to uh, review and uh, you know, sign, sign the letter uh, relative to the MBTA. Uh, at this point, the board is not intending to meet next week. Uh, next Tuesday is Election Day, so we will, we will not be meeting. Uh, we will be having information coming out about uh, public information meetings relative to the special town meeting. Um, and so I, I think with that, I would, uh, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.